To the Swan County Board of County Commissioners, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Right now, we'll have Commissioner Fleming do the invocation and the prayer.
I'd probably come this afternoon in your name, and I'd probably come thanking you for a minute's blessing. And if you still find us, we thank you for bringing us back safe one more time. And we pray to help us to take care of county business as you see fit. Watch over and protect us God, our feet, our tongue, heart, mind, our soul. Give us all our sins, and know one is unknown, and actually have mercy on us. Now bless us, to that tonight, don't get us sick among us. Be with us and stand by, follow the acts of Jesus, and all blessings that you bless these commissioners and act. Make the right decisions, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. We are the citizens of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First out of a business approval in minutes for the December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, and January fourth, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting to have a discussion or a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, off the motion.
Set. Motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor? All opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull out of number three and number twelve. Is there any others?
Would you mind pulling six and nine, Mr. Chairman? Six or nine?
Six, three, nine.
Yeah, just for clarification.
Any others? With that, I'll ask for items two, four, five, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen. Any discussion or a motion to approve?
All for motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Lynn, all in favor? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries by. Item number three, approval of task order for North Florida Professional Service Incorporated for topo map of the U.S. one twenty-nine fire station. Mr. Harris. Is the only thing we're doing there is a topo map of that place?
Yeah, that's gonna tell us what we need regarding the elevation changes for the improvements that'll be on property and back out to the one twenty-nine where that road will be able to build in there.
My only question is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Was the price tag on it, ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars is that? Just seems like a lot for a topo map.
Let me just, how can I best respond to this? When we select engineers, we have to follow the Florida statute on that. And when we do, we have to advertise a request for qualifications. This engineering company has been doing our work for quite a while into that process. You typically have task orders that I bring back to the board for consideration when it's time for them to give us a price on a particular project. This is following that procedure. I don't have anything to compare it to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Flynn.
I would, I guess, agree. I've mentioned this before, and my stance is still the same. I don't really like these master agreements that we have in place because I think that, at the end of the day, competition in the marketplace has lost and fell by the wayside due to a bid. So if, and it's not this particular contractor, it's any contractor. I mean, if the contractor knows he's getting your work, how do you know that you're getting the best price for the job? And how do you know that the marketplace wouldn't provide a better number for you? I think that, in being stewards as a taxpayer, if there's a way for us to put this stuff out to bid or limit the exposure on any particular project, I mean, I think that that's something that we need to go toward. I mean, I would agree with Commissioner White. I think that ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for a topo appraisal, I mean, it's eleven extra site, that's a thousand dollar maker. That's a lot of money. And that may be a good price, but without having a, you know, a job or bid on the job, how does anyone know?
Here's the problem that we have, and we didn't create this situation. I'm just gonna tell you, the legislature, well, I mean, I'm convinced that there's a strong lobbying arm for certain professions that go to legislature and get laws developed to cater to their particular industry. In this particular case, we're talking about the Competitive Negotiation Act, and what happens is, and I've explained this several times before, some of you may be familiar with this, but when we are hiring certain types of professionals, we can't just advertise a bid to do that. What the law requires is that we advertise a request for qualifications. Those qualifications come in from any number of, in this case, engineers. A committee is formed, the criteria is established in advance with the advertisement. A committee sits down and ranks all of them, and then you begin negotiations with typically the company that has ranked the highest score. Under the law, you then have to make a decision. If you select an engineer, then thereafter, the projects, the actual projects, you typically award by a task order. So is it the best system? I don't think it is. Is it a system that's consistent with Florida law? Yeah, it is. And unfortunately, we have little that we can do to affect that. What we could do is go through that exact exercise with each project, where you advertise and go through requests for qualifications for an engineer on every individual project. But I think it was designed the way that it is to make it very apparent that that would be terribly cumbersome to try to do that with every project.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Flynn.
I would agree with you. I don't think that it needs to be done on every single project, but I think that as a county, as a board, if we could set a project size, any project over X amount of dollars in total construction, we need to do an RFP or a RFP. I believe, you know, if we have three engineering firms or two, however many we have on that responded to the RFQ, can you just put it out to bid to those three? Say, hey, you three firms, here's our next project, what will you bid for?
I think their response would be no.
They being?
Those firms. I'm not interested in speaking for them, but I think typically their response would be no, that because of the seat, the Competitive Negotiation Act, you don't have the luxury of bidding it then, then after you have selected them. You go to them and you award based on a task order. Because if you could bid those things amongst them, then you wouldn't need the Competitive Negotiation Act. We would just bid these things outright with every one of them. It'd be a lot easier to do it that way.
So once we approve an engineer, that's it? That's who you got to go to?
Well.
And I'm not picking on more.
Unless we come up with something we think is terribly unobnoxious, and we just start the whole process over and advertise a new request for qualifications and start, we still have to operate within the process that the legislature has created.
Well, I understand. It just caught my eye that, I was like, Commissioner Lynn was like, that's a thousand-dollar maker, just get a map, you know, that's a lot of money. And it just caught my, I'm not picking on them, and, you know, that may be where it's at. I don't have anything to compare it to. It just, I don't know, it just seemed out of touch with me.
I know that it's gonna be a part of our overall site development, because the information they're going to obtain is critical for everything that we have to do with stormwater management, except for taking drain field and other things out there, but I can't tell you what percentage of the overall cost of site development that number represents.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Here's my idea, is on projects of this magnitude, that we know it's gonna be, it's gonna be a million dollars plus to stretch those funds as far as we can and to keep all of our contractors, and I'm not picking on North Florida either, but the process going forward, can we say, hey, engineering costs shall not exceed ten percent of total gross of the project at any given point? Because here's my concern, not just with this project, with any particular project. How do you know that, after the topo, the ten-seven, then you get site plan, that's gonna cost you twenty or thirty or whatever, and then you, you know, you got improvies services, and you got other stuff to do? I mean, how do you know that the job doesn't get to be fifteen, twenty percent of the cost of the total project with one particular engineer?
Yeah, what's gonna happen is we're gonna come in here with estimates as soon as we go ahead and, I mean, if the board gives me the go-ahead and says, let's go ahead and get this thing underway, then we're gonna come back with a total task order for everything that's gonna take. And you will have an estimate on the cost of construction. And I'm gonna tell you, we had an engineer's estimate of probable cost when we were applying to the funding. Personally, I think the number is a little bit high, and I say that because I actually spoke to a contractor, albeit using a different type of construction on part of that, the bays, because I was trying to cut the costs. And I've got a number that I think is gonna result in a significant reduction, and at least that portion of it, that is in the living area. But we're just gonna have to put it together. So we'll come back with a total task order for all of the engineering work, and we can compare that to hand estimate of the total cost of the project, and then you'll have a better idea of what percentage it is of the project.
Mr. Chairman, just, I just, couple of thoughts, but the number I'm not sure about, I mean, does it seem a little high possibly? I don't, I would like to, I mean, I don't know if we need to have a conversation with them and see, but I think every time, company been working with them, working with them well, doing many things as one can, and I think you, every time, you learn the caliber of work they do versus what we're trying to get done. I think that, that in itself is worth something versus bringing some companies in that have not been here. Now, I'm not saying many things should be bid out, I'm just saying, at the end of time, it can cost you money doing things. I'm not saying about doing plans, but I wish we could move forward with this. I hate to just stop in our tracks and back up, turn around, and be another three months before we get something done, but that's the.
Well, again, I'm not picking on North Florida for sure, and I like all the folks there. It's just that when you split through there and you see that ten thousand dollars for a topo map, it just, I don't know, private business owner, it just kind of pulled me. So that's where I'm at with it. I mean, I don't have a problem approving it, it just, I don't have anything to compare it to, so it seems out of line.
Yes, sir.
I would, I'd like to have a little input on this. I'm ready to see the project move forward. I know it's a lot of money. So if you look at it, it's a thousand-dollar maker, but I think it's probably where we at, that it is just where we at. We have a company like this of this magnitude, and they can come in and do the work for the county, getting the work done. But this is the first time that we have ever been faced with this. I think it's worth looking into, but I have to agree that I pretty much ready to move forward. When Mr. Hale said a couple of meetings ago, the representative asked him how he was coming with the building, he hadn't gone and had a grab of ground yet. You know, tomorrow, he'll be up there in line with the people, and if they ask a question, I, you know, we don't need to sit still, I'm ready to move forward.
Mr. Flynn, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to be clear, it's not about the project, it's about the process. It's not about this particular firm or this particular anything, it's just about the process that we move, that we're doing this. I mean, we have master agreements with one particular firm, I mean, they know they're getting ninety-nine percent of our work. What incentive do they have to really sharpen their pencil and give this board the confidence that we're getting the best bang for the buck for the taxpayers that we represent? That's my point. It's not, I'm ready to move forward with the project, it's not the project, it's not the firm, it's the particular process. Though I think we can do a better job at how we're awarding some of these contracts, I do. I understand that, you know, we got to work with the Florida statutes in doing it, but if we can nail down three engineering firms that meet our RFQs, and then we put it out to bid to those particular three and say, hey, we got this job, it's gonna be roughly a million to two million dollars job, give us a number. And then, you know, we don't know what these other firms, what their workload is like. Some of them may be starving, and give us a better number. I mean, that's, for me, it's the process and just being a good steward of taxpayer dollars, that's all.
I would just as lay on the heels of that, I mean, I'd agree with everyone's comments here, and definitely ready to move forward with this project. I mean, Mr. Harris says that some of the, we can go back to North Florida, and obviously not to exceed this, but to, if there's any adjustment there.
I'd go back and talk to them.
Yeah.
Try to chisel it down some. I will say this, I don't know how many of you were on here, maybe three of you, maybe two of you, I can't remember now, but we had an occasion back before we started the actual design work on the sewer plant out there at I-75-136. And I recognized clearly that the number that we were given was way too high. Well, the reason I knew that was because I had handled similar projects in another county, I mean, almost identical, and I knew what the number should be. And I gave that engineering firm an opportunity to give us a different number, and for a moment, they came down. In fact, Mr. Prabat was in there when I had those meetings. And then we brought it back to the board, I think it was the day, year, the day before, we brought it back to the board, that firm came in, had a conversation with me, and went up even higher. So I came in here and recommended to the board that we not move forward on that, and that we had to do something different, and we did something different. But it was, in that particular case, hundreds of thousands of dollars different. So it happens from time to time, but these companies know that on occasion, we're going to advertise, and we're gonna go through these RFQ processes again, and they'll respond accordingly. So that does happen, and they do need to try to keep their numbers in line, but I don't have any problem going back and trying to chisel this number down. I just, with that being said, I'll offer a motion to do that, but to come back with the best price possible.
Second. So you have a motion? I did. Took bullets to the record, I'm sorry. Can you trade the board anything?
No, I would approve this, but I won't, no, but I won't be negotiating. Go ahead. Who hasn't approved it, we're just beating the number down as much as we can, is that what you're trying to say?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Absolutely.
I'll say that.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Lynn, all in favor? All opposed, same sign. Item number six, I guess you want to talk about six, seven, eight, nine altogether?
Yeah, I just had a quick question from Harris. I've got really no problem with it, but reading through all the documents, I kind of got lost. All we're doing really is, is time extensions.
That's correct.
Is that right? I mean, if I got lost, and this replaces one, this replaces six, this is time, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm filled with doubts. I don't have any more questions.
Anyone else?
All for motion, Mr. Chairman.
Set.
Motion for item six, seven, eight, nine, by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twelve, award contract authorized county administrator to execute agreement with RDK Truck Sales, release of two front-load garbage trucks pending county attorney review. I pulled that one because we're in the midst of a lot of things on garbage, and we've moved to private contractors, or we haven't, there's, we've got private firms in doing a lot of the commercial lease stands now, are picking up that business, and not knowing what we're gonna do with the door-to-door pickup on the garbage. It was just my thought that we ought to have more discussion on leasing two front-load garbage trucks, to maybe just one and discussing the other one. We've got two leased trucks coming up for renewal in February, so we've got to turn two in and get two more, or turn two in, get one new one, and wait a few, whatever, month, two months, to see where all this garbage goes and make a decision on the second one. So it was my idea to get more approval on the two, but to have a discussion with Mr. Harris and Dennis Rafferty over the landfill or the garbage solid waste to see about the second truck, whether we really needed that second truck or not.
Mr. Chairman, I've set that meeting up, and we'll go ahead and have that meeting. The only thing I can tell you right now is that on the commercial side, we have two-hundred-and-nineteen customers, and we still have a hundred-and-seventy-something of those customers, so we still have quite a volume there that we're dealing with. But if the board goes in and approves it, then we'll have that meeting, the three of us, and sit down and talk through it, and see if we're comfortable moving forward at that point, because we do have to get them replaced.
Need a discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Flynn.
Mr. Harris, how are the, are the two trucks we have now, are they both, they're both new, they're twelve months?
I think they replace them every thirteen months under these leases.
Can we continue the use of those, or we have to, required by a lease?
Under the terms of our lease, I think they have to go back, because these companies typically have a number of miles that they like to take those trucks back. I think they, or they sell them as used trucks at that point, but it's their program. We used to have the same thing with dump trucks.
In the particular lease, is there a, an option for us to return any of the equipment, one of the trucks back early if we didn't, we didn't need it? Is there like a?
Actually, we returned both of them. One of them was just an accident.
I thought we were down one.
Yeah, we are, we are.
I hadn't actually thought about this, but just over the weekend, I had three different commercial can customers call me and question the rate increases and their shop name, so I suspect that one seventy, I was probably gonna come down.
It probably will. It probably will, but we just still have a huge volume. And I'll just remind you, we've still been increasing, our volumes have been going up by two thousand tons a year for the last several years. So even though we're losing some of the commercial, we still have quite a bit of waste coming in those collection sites.
Well, my only thing is to look at it and just make, make sure that's eight thousand dollars a piece on those trucks, that we truly needed both trucks at this point, and if I could get, you know, I just want the more of it. We can go ahead and approve it, but just give me and wish, I mean, Mr. Harris and Dennis a chance to talk and discuss to see if we really need that second.
Sure.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Stapleton, the second by Commissioner Lynn, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifteen, Matt Ingle, the Building Department. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Harris and Mr. Prabat, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to y'all tonight. For those of y'all that don't know me, I'm Robert Ingle, I'm currently serving as Swan County Building Inspector. Just wanted to give a little information about myself and the current situation at the Building Department. A long history in construction industry ranging back to two thousand. I was employed by my father, Larry Ingle, a state of Florida licensed contractor. In that time, we did a wide variety of construction projects ranging from new residential construction and commercial construction, including numerous assisted living facilities. In two thousand sixteen, I was hired as the Fett County Building Inspector. My duties while living with Fett County, I'm a building inspector, zoning administrator, code enforcement for the Fett County, code enforcement and permitting agency of the county may. I served as department head in building and zoning, and attended regular board commission meetings at city council. Currently, I have met the timeframe established by Department of Business and Professional Regulation for building officials. Given the loss of our building official, Mr. Taylor, Mr. John R. Hamilton County Building Official, and Mr. Robert Rogers, building official for the city of Loudoun, I certify my time and experience for my application. When it comes to being a building inspector, it's not always as black and white as people think. We as licensed individuals are charged with upholding the building code, we are also responsible to the jurisdiction we represent, responsible to the contractor, and most importantly, responsible to the citizen to the property owner. There are times where we must correct issues on job sites and in the office. I've always been the type of person that has a mindset that there's always a solution. My purpose is to regulate and enforce and to help. There is no greater satisfaction than helping a person bring their dreams to reality, whether it's building their first home or putting a roof on their home. That will always be my aim and objective. Currently in the Building Department, just for the point of reference, last month in December, we did a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-six permits for one month. Applications are still coming in, plans are still being reviewed, inspections are being conducted. It's been a huge adjustment at all this dealing with the loss of Patrick, but we are pushing forward. I have many individuals of great growing depth and thanks during this painful time. Everyone at the Building Department, Meredith, Alicia Kelly, Jennifer with nine-one-one, Lee with Veteran Services, Marcy Douglas, Vanessa Bryant, Alice Gregg, Jimmy Norris, and most importantly, our zoning administrator, Ron McMeeks. He is valuable assets for our county, and he's a good friend. Since the time Patrick entered the hospital, Ron has been out there with suggestions, help, and support. I've always been a believer in keeping people in the loop with information. That being said, I encourage any commissioner or any individual in the public to stop by with questions, concerns, or if you just want to get to know me better. My door is always open to help. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming, and appreciate the job that's taking place over there, and our sympathies are with you, with you and Patrick, and I know it's probably a big undertaking to make all that work and to get all these permits done, and I'm quite sure it's probably a lot more than it's been in the past, but I just want to thank you, and I thank Ron for stepping up and trying to organize and make all that happen, and all the other building officials that's helping out, and I just want to thank you, and I appreciate you coming by and talking to me.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Flynn.
I'd like to say that I'm proud of you, you know, you got some very large shoes to fill, but I thank you, I always say, I think this county matches many areas of the county, and they're confident in the county, the county's down, I did work, I did work, did work with the education. I've come down here for some time, and I've worked on a lot of things to do, but I think it's time to come out and sit down and talk.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate all the support.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Moving along to item number seventeen, general business, discuss a possible board action on paving DeVena Street and Palm Street within the city of Loudoun. Mr. Harris, say this name.
Second.
Sorry, item number sixteen, discuss for a possible board action, ADG software, Mr. Barry Baker.
As I say, Mr. Chairman, it's really, this has been a long process, it started a couple of years ago, we started looking for software. Whenever we did, about a year and a half ago, it's probably counted everything a whole, because it's really, we didn't know where we were going after that year. This past, that session, it's where we did set aside, we had also set aside some portion of that this year forward. And so it's really that we're at the point now where the paper sheriff and my office are really needing to move forward. It's really there just some major issues there, and this is something, it's really that we found the firm. where that we found a firm that is able to take, it can do all five constitutional officers. A lot of the companies that we look at, it's where that they may specialize on works, or they may specialize in sheriff's, or one of the other offices. It's where that this one seems to have a good report. We actually did a survey of all the different counties in the state, and asked them what type of finance software that they were using. It's where that, and this was, this and one other firm, the two highest ones in the state. The other firm, though, whenever we compared it to the sheriff's office, it was on the sheriff's office that was using it, and this wasn't, you very positive. So that's the reason we're speaking to the county auditor, to see if this would qualify as a source, or as a possible feedback on another program, or as a possible feedback on another county. So this is something, if the county mayor may not choose to go forward with this, it's a thing there is actually, it's a decision of the county. I'm just asking if we can move forward. It is something that we would take in before we move forward. We have to gain the approval of our auditor, as well as if we could also give the attorney.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say, I've had some discussions about this, and I would, myself, I would be interested in moving forward with it.
Second half.
Well, I went to Bushmore when Mr. Baker went down and looked at it, and mounted up the courthouse for this last Tuesday, this is the last Tuesday. They tried to do it. And looked at it again, and it looks pretty user friendly to me. I mean, it's got a lot of, what do you call them? Modules, yes, modules. They go with it that you can add on to do different things other than just financial software with, and it looked okay to me, and it looked user friendly, and I'm no computer guy by no means, but it looked like I might get off with some money. So with that being said, I'm good with it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. I've been talking to Mr. Baker about it, I made a few phone calls myself, and the one thing you can get on it is, you can tailor it to fit the needs, and you're not being charged with things that you don't need, so it's not a one size fits all, and that's, sometimes you get sold with a lot of goods you don't need, and that doesn't seem to be the case in this one, so I'm more willing to.
The point that you bring up is very good, too. It's where there is some, there are some very expensive programs out there, but being expensive doesn't necessarily mean that this is the best program. I'm not going to claim that this is the Mercedes, that it is not, but that it is, it's definitely a very good Chevrolet. It's a good program, if this meets the needs.
Mr. Flynn, I'm not a computer savvy either, but I'm more willing to.
We need that form of motion.
Yeah, sure, it'd just be a consensus right now. I still got to go back, get the information, make sure that, you know, it qualifies, and then we have to bring back the package to it.
Mr. Baker, before you leave, though, you told me you had, what, 16 modules that you were pricing into the software?
There's actually 20, 23 modules. It covers general ledger, purchase orders with encumbrances, inventory control, electronic requisition system, payroll, HR, electronic time card entry, time clock entry, enrollment, personnel action requests, app tracking system, system link application, fact, giving permit systems with inspections, code enforcement systems, fixed assets complete management, money tracking system, total billing, work orders, sales tax, business license, global work orders, special assessment systems, and cemetery tracking. I don't think we're only a cemetery.
We purchased all them, or we just get some big for modules?
It's where that a lot of those, it's where that I know our office will be utilizing in Sam's office as well. We also have to go to Ricky, this may be something that he may want to look in at in the future. He's not committed, and I'm not asking him to, but it's where that it is something that is open, and is up to file, he can accept up to file the constitutional officers, as well as the board. As the board can look at those, as those modules that pertain to it, and if y'all would, if y'all would just let us know which ones that y'all would like to, for us to purchase. It's where that it also, if there are programs, if there are modules that we don't need to use now, that it may be something that we would want to look at in a year, we can lock in the price for those modules now. That's where the company will honor that at the year. I'll give you one on one, for instance, and that is the Building Department. It's where that right now, it's a Mac, and they'll have their hands for it. It's where that they don't need something else, they don't like to get this or something that he wanted to look at, or be open to, it'll be his choice or whatever.
Just one other concern I have with it, and I just want to put it on the record. If Kelly decides, or the board decides to go and get on board with you on this software, would the board have access to the financials from their office? I mean, as a read-only, I'm sure, but...
Yes. This board has, if we're all on the same, if we're all using the same software, this is the board that have the access to take and do the read-only, as you would say, but the general ledger is supposed to be accessible.
So any reports they want to run, or invoices they want to look at, we can have access to?
Yes. I will tell you, sometimes if you have outside programs, and you're trying to incorporate two together, sometimes there comes issues. We've ran into that in the past. It's just sometimes it's where they don't talk to each other. But it's regular, you know, we're just trying to be honest.
Apart from that, as long as it works, we can...
As long as it works, and it does not pose security risk. It's where that I think that we're an outside module or something, it would definitely have to be vetted to make sure that it meets the security requirements. We have the sheriff's information, we have to be very particular with the use of anything dealing with that deal, as well as some of the other agencies that we have to deal with.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess, additionally, I would say is that moving forward, if we, I think you said that there's other modules there, if we need to upgrade other departments, or upgrade the software that those departments are using, upgrade, update, whatever, to try to move toward, I guess, this direction, so that loads all those programs talk to each other, so to speak. I mean, it would not be wise of us to have this department running on this program, or this one's on that one, so then we try to bring it all together, nothing, nothing...
Just, it ain't like the way to hear the league. We're all one county, I mean, as much as possible, I know software's never perfect, but as much as we can make it work, countywide, that's what I'd like to see.
I do have one question for the chairman, because it's where you made comment that it would need to come back to the board. This board had already put this on our ledger last, on the ledger last year. It generally wants this in there, it's where that wants to be called off the guidelines and stuff, it's where we're in the purchase, but it needs to come back before the board. If that's the case, the comp, because the sheriff does his purchases as well as I do, but it would be with the requirement that it has to go through you as well as the county auditor, or if that's what it is, it's just...
Typically, on purchasing, my, it would be, it's constitutional officers have independent power to be able to do that within your budget. But I was getting the sense of the board was wanting to see, you know, what the program was. I haven't seen what the, you know, you said, going through the auditor and then, you know, for minor football, but, you know, I haven't been able to see what the contractors are talking about, you know, going through there. I'm not computer guy, they either would be able to judge on that way, or be able, you know, but what I would be interested in is to make sure, and then to assure the board that the process of, of personnel is better. That's what I meant from that report.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for the commentary.
Is there any question, any further questions? Is there? If it is, Rod, do you have consensus?
Yes.
One more is to ask, for the record, do we have consensus on that?
Yes.
Thank you. On the Commissioner's item, Commissioner Stapleton had something, so I'll just turn to Commissioner Stapleton.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a, Sheriff, you can come up for a second. Just, many people's got social media, and they probably know the news, but the sheriff had a guest staying in this hotel across the street, and he was such a good guest, he got to get out and do a little work to kind of make the place look better, and he decided to check out without talking with the sheriff. But anyway, they, they was able to bring that good fellow back, I believe.
Yes, sir. He apparently didn't like accommodations, but we got him back on board. But, yeah, since you brought up, is, you know, we had talked about the wiring, which I think Vicki, Vicki here or not, yeah, Vicki, but she can tell you more about the, on her side of it, about far as the wiring of the jail, and with the phone systems, and then Biggie's saying about the cameras. The one little hiccup that we had back there is where he decided to exit, is one of the cameras was down, and I think to get it back up and right at her dollars from where it was at, so, which I understand about, let us not fix it, because, you know, we're going to have a new system, you know, but then we're kind of on the blind side back there right now, so the reason I brought it up is to see if we can't go ahead and get, make sure, you know, we get something working, you know, as soon as we can, you know, so we don't have these issues again, you know, for the, you know, the people. I want to stay with this, plus, you know, Biggie's got several projects here that's in waiting to get this wiring done, and then the cameras up, so here again, we just try to expedite things, and I realize that, you know, we're in a time now where things aren't hold, or we're going to order stuff, and then we've got this fly line chain that's held up, but we can maybe, you know, try to get this thing going, and I know, I appreciate Vicki Wood, and everybody involved would definitely appreciate all that.
Mr. Harris, do we have any timeframe or any idea on that?
What I understand is, I believe they've identified all the locations now, and a bid spec just has to be written, the cabling, and I don't know anything beyond the cabling that has to be done there, but whatever it is, the spec just has to be written, and we can get it advertised.
I guess my question to the timeframe is, if it's going to be months, do we need to get that one area fixed in the meantime? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I mean, we're going, honestly, we're going to push through, but I just, you know, I don't...
I mean, I want you to keep the residents in there.
Well, yeah, me too. It's not good on my end, for sure. I mean, I have about 800 dollars to get it fixed and all, which, you know, is, I know that's a lot of money, but then, you know, the safety of, you know, my personnel, keeping everybody where they're supposed to be, you know, probably a higher price tag, so, yeah, I guess if we can, if I can get with Mr. Harris and see what kind of timeframe we're looking at, but, you know, definitely need to get that one fixed, because that was not the whole problem, but a lot of the problem there of why this thing took place, because they was blinded in the control room, that's where all the, all the activity takes place, when doors open, when doors are closed, and they couldn't tell what was going on because of that one camera being down, and that's where our vulnerability was.
I mean, I would, I would be in favor of just going ahead and getting that done fixed if we could, I mean, because those folks, they, they tell secrets, you know, now everybody, all the bad guys know where that spot is.
Yeah, yeah, sir.
I gotta fix one.
We can't do that.
No, I wasn't going to do that. I was going to say, we could give the sheriff a lounge chair, and he can just sit around there.
Yeah, it'd work. It'd be a little warmer weather, though.
I definitely agree with that. I mean, 800 bucks, like you say, for the safety of your staff, our community, gosh, that's what it costs to bring out the folks from Hamilton County and everyone that was involved in the way you see, you know, and get it all up, and, you know, I don't...
No, I'm just, we need consensus for that.
We just need consensus for the sheriff. So I'm good with that, and also, Sheriff, I thank you for speaking with Mr. Harris, and bless the F for that, this on the... I mean, there's delays on everything right now with supplies and materials, but I understand it's top priority. I got to visit that place, and I can see why nobody wants to stay with you, but...
They let you out?
Hey, you ought to took a walk through there.
I didn't see the mugshot.
Just not...
It's accommodations just isn't what I was looking for.
Thank you, Chairman Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along to the general business, item number seventeen, discuss possible board action, paving Eva Street and Palm Street within the city of Lava. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think we have quite a history of trying to help the city out from time to time on some of these roads that they have problems with, but more importantly, on Palm Street, we know that investors went in there and made a significant investment, cleaned that area up, considerably did a beautiful job, and have those units leased in there now. I drove out there the other day, and it is an absolute dust storm getting back there to concrete plant. That is a very short stretch, and if the board would agree, we could go in there, I don't know how quickly we're going to have that paving machine that we're getting, or when it'll be delivered, but we could probably go ahead and box that out, rock it, and pave that, and it would be a huge help to everyone that has to use this short stretch of road. The other one, Eva, is probably a little bit shorter, very narrow, little paved road that actually services a cemetery up there. A few years ago, we went in and boxed out Hannah and Eva and Lime Rock those and put density on them, and later the city paved those roads. This section of Eva is actually north of that paved section. It had been paved many, many years before, and she's falling apart. We could probably go in there with our machine and rip that asphalt out, and we'd pave that as well, if the board agrees to do so.
Mr. Chairman, do we have timeframe on the paving machine that works, deliver it?
It was specified to be March.
That's perfect.
Couple months.
March. And I'm just going to tell you, we've got a lot of projects underway right now. You know, we're trying to create that second construction period, so we have a full plate. We would add this to everything else that's going on, and we would just have to work it in like we are with everything else that we're doing right now.
Mr. Chairman.
I was just going to say, I'm definitely in support of, I mean, Eva Street is a very long street with Palm Street, and I think the last time Mr. Daniel was here, Jeff, we talked about it, and I was asking if there was something we could do with using our machinery and our rock to help those guys out, up the city out, get that road done, but you're right, I don't think there's an open spot out there. That guy has still, every, I think he's made rooms out of our places that have a business that didn't exist out there, and it's kind of going to be, see what's happening out there, but I'm in favor of it. I don't have a problem with it.
Anybody else? Come here, please.
Yeah, I, Eva, there, this here earlier, that, it's kind of, they're going to grow, getting prepared for that. I've been approached several times, I've been on the records, concerning Eva Street, there's a small street there, small, they have a concern, they're passive, because individuals going back to that city cemetery, and the east side, need to be paved. I'm glad that this is coming fast now, the new floor, they had it in Palm Street, I know it's in that big business district, so, send them out, and I look forward to doing it.
Mr. Curtis, I think you made a decision.
Thank you.
George Curtis, City Manager, City of Lava, Chairman White, Commissioners, Mr. Harris. Just wanted to express our thanks for the collaboration, the efforts that are working on the agenda. Road projects in the city have been... are working on the agenda. Uh, road projects in the city have been far and few between for too long, and, uh, we're, uh, with the new Hump Course Director that we hired, and the support of our mayor and our city councils who are here also, uh, on behalf of the city. Uh, we, we really look forward to making a substantial impact in roads, uh, in the city, and we think that they kind of need to come alongside us and, and partner with us on that. That's greatly appreciated, and we're here to help the county out also, in the process of working out a few things that we can do on our end, so.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes, sir.
On Palm Street, I guess that's the one where Mr. Berman's got.
Yes, sir.
Is there any, uh, utilities that's gotta be fixed under that road before it's paved?
We need, we have, uh, no, sir. Uh, we, we'll certainly look at that to be sure, but we have been assessing what needs to be done to make sure that Mr. Berman has the availability. Uh, there, there, uh, there was just recent discussion, uh, to put some additional channels on the road, so that we could, uh, feed pipes through, uh, in the future. But, uh, we, we can certainly get on that in short notice, and make sure that, uh, and work with, uh, Hump Course Professional Services to do the sort of design work, and, uh, and get that moving forward.
Yeah, I just seen the shame of paving road there, and you need some other things that's underneath.
Right. Now, on Eva, we did do an analysis, and Eva's ready to go. That water line's already been replaced, it's up there, and there's a fire hiker down the street that was put in, so we're here on that.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd just like to, uh, thank Mr. Curtis, kind of, and I thank our council members that's here tonight, appreciate you fellows, mayor, uh, just, uh.
Ladies.
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 I said council members. I didn't say council men. Uh, no, I just, uh, I appreciate it. It's, uh, it's been a long time coming to collaborate on some things, and we've talked and talked and talked. I mean, there was talk before, many years, and it's, it's tough to do, it's no doubt. There's a lot of, a lot of personalities, uh, a lot of opinions, and at the end of the day, we just have to try to get by that. We're all, we're all in this together, and we're gonna continue to push this thing, and, uh, we just appreciate y'all's support, being supportive, being a part of it. Obviously, it's a two-way street. There will be things, like Mr. Curtis said, that they're gonna be able to help us with, and, uh, at the end of the day, it'll, this one place will be better for, so, well, just grateful for each other.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to echo that, um, congratulate George on, on the administrator there, and thanks for all the council members, members, um, coming out, and, and, you know, I, I've said it before, I, I think that it's a long time coming. Commissioner Stapleton just touched on it on, that, you know, the city and county collaborating, learning to work together. I mean, I, I call it, you know, city, city or county, but together we equal community, and, and if we can learn to work together, get, get some things done, everybody in this community benefits. Um, so I'm looking forward to the challenges and working with you going forward, and seeing what we can accomplish. Thanks for coming.
Well, I do, appreciate all of y'all coming. Good to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Berman, do you want to say something?
Yes, sir. I'm giving everyone, I said a lot last time.
Uh, Dan, can I get your name and address?
Dana Berman, speaking for, um, one forty Palm Street. Um, I said a lot last time. I was given some time, I appreciate it, and once I express my grat, gratitude, appreciation to the city and the county for all, it's, it's, it's a huge deal on that street. Um, it'll be phenomenal. That's it, I appreciate it. If you need from us, please.
Phenomenal job, I was gonna say, keep doing what you're doing.
No, it's been, it's been everybody. You know, it's been the people that are working with me, again, the city's been phenomenal, the county's been phenomenal, the top team, it's been extremely smooth from, like, just where I come from. It's been a pleasure.
Very glad to hear it. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
So, do we need to do anything with that, for that, Mr. Consensus?
I'll tell you for the minutes, why don't you go ahead and move approval, and they will help us if there are any questions later, we can look at.
I'll tell you how to move.
I'll set.
Be a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor? Aye. Snake, all opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss possible board action establishing a minimum per acre price for surplus property out located on one hundred and twelfth street. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have information on numbers in the marketplace out there that's provided to you. Like the other properties that we have marketed, the board needs to establish a minimum per acre price, and then we will forward that over to the real estate company, and they will then begin getting the message out, getting this thing advertised. What we paid was three thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars an acre. Um, I think that was in twenty twenty. And real estate has gone through the roof since then. So, I just need a number that we can forward. Again, this would be your minimum number. Um, as you'll see, I think on the next item, you established a minimum number, a number on that property, and we got numbers that were considerably higher. I will say, it's always easier to come down than to go up, so.
That being said, gentlemen, any discussion, any ideas, or minimum for us?
That's a prime piece of real estate on a good road, 'cause I'm, I'm somewhere around seven thousand.
I was at sixty-five, so what's going on?
Great minds, thank the life.
Yeah, I mean, if, if.
Mr. Chairman, it's all right.
Well, if, if you look at the comps, I mean, the, the street addresses, you got one at thirty-eight fifty, roughly, fifty-four hundred and fifty-three hundred, um, per acre on sales, and none of those are as close to the city limits in town as what that particular piece is. I believe they're all on paved roads and whatnot, but, um, the county's had a good job maintaining it and, and, and beautifying it. It's a pretty piece of property that I, I would, you can always come down again, go up, so, you know, we all want to split the difference and do sixty-seven fifty or something like that. I had sixty-five on my mind, but whatever y'all wanted.
I like seven, seven thousand.
Always go down.
Seven thousand.
Everybody consensus on seven thousand?
I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
All we need, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Item number nineteen, discuss possible board action offers on surplus property parcel ID sixteen, doesn't exist, Mr. King, uh, Hertz.
This one actually makes the case for not selling property on the courthouse steps. I think probably all of us were surprised when these numbers came in. This is the double wide mobile home that was pretty well ransacked in Branford. Um, I think I heard lots of opinions on what different people thought it was worth, but when it was sent over to the real estate company and we started receiving offers, I think probably they were shocked. We didn't see these numbers until, um, we had a public opening here, and then you piled this on the spreadsheet, gave it to you, but I believe the highest number on here is offer number six, had fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. I, I'm not gonna go through all of these, that's, that's.
I like, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Would.
I like offer number six. I like the fact that the offer's a number, so, you know, we don't know the names, all they care about the names are taxpayers by the dollar. Offer number six is the highest one, cash, close ASAP. I'd give it number six.
I don't see that there's much to discuss.
We, we do need a motion, though, to accept.
Do I have a motion?
Offer motion to accept, all that information.
And authorize signatures on closing documents, everything.
And authorize administration, Mr. Vatter, sell.
Motion by Commissioner Lance, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Wow.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, we talked about previous meetings. Are we, do I automatically sell these properties to, to somewhere in our budget to be used for future land acquisition, or?
Yes, sir.
So done getting lost in shuffle?
We are. Two things. One, in a prior meeting when we talked about, um, this last previous agenda item, you said in that meeting that those proceeds would go into a specific line item held for a future piece of property for the county. Um, the others, though, are going into a specific line item, so that whatever properties we sell will have those identified in a separate line item. If the board decides to use that for economic development or any other purpose, you can do that, but it'll be isolated out in a separate line item in the budget.
They weren't lost in the shuffle.
Uh, Mr. Lee. Uh, item number twenty, additional agenda items, are there any additional agenda items?
No, sir.
Item number twenty-one, public concerns and comments, anyone from the public willing to speak. Not a little long. Uh, Mr. Berman, anything?
Uh, no, sir, not this evening.
Mr. Harris.
I'm just gonna say that everyone sure needs to be wearing masks and being careful this time of year. There's been a lot of sickies going around, and I've had about four weeks of it over the last six weeks, and it's been terrible. Um, and it hasn't been COVID, there, there are things out there that I've experienced that are even worse than when I experienced COVID. So, I would just urge everyone to be very careful, very cautious. Um, it's aggravating to wear a mask, but, um, it might be a good idea, it might make a big difference for you. So, I would just appeal to you to be careful.
Man, would you want to speak?
Just, I'm the realtor for the successful bidder for the Ranford Properties.
Could, would you mind coming to the podium, please?
Hi.
Name, name, name and address, please, for the record.
Susan Sloan, I'm from Lake City. Um, I'm a realtor.
I didn't recognize you with the mask on.
I know. Uh, anyways, um, the, for the Ranford Properties, my client, where do we go from here? We had submitted a written offer before we went into this bid process. Do we start over, or do we use the?
No, on this property?
Uh-huh.
No, I'm sure that the closing will be scheduled.
I think she's, she's saying she had, when we first put it out, is what you're talking about.
Correct. Correct. We had submitted a, a, as is contract for purchase and sale to Mindy, and then you changed the process to this. So, are we going loosey-goosey, or are we gonna have actually a contract for sale, or are we just gonna go to closing?
I haven't seen the format of the offer. The offer may suffice itself, otherwise I'll prepare, uh, an agreement.
I know we picked the title company, so they're probably gonna need something to get going.
Did, in your offer, did you select a particular company?
We did, yes.
Miss Will, thank you.
We'll forward all the details out on that.
Okay. Uh, Christopher Fleming.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just have to kind of put you kind of bluntly. Um, I'm glad to see you sitting here tonight, trying to make some progress. Uh, in my twelfth year, we haven't had a, a working relationship, and I thought that was super, but, uh, thank you for probably moving up from a different level. Glad to see the council here tonight, and, uh, look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mayor. See you, man. Look forward to working with you, and I hope that this is the beginning of it. Tell them it can be great for, for the both of us. Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, I just wanna continue to tell us a prayer for Patrick and his family, also for his office. I know it's a tough time, and, uh, we're all with y'all. It's just, uh, we'll push and get through this. It's, it's a bit heartbreaking on all of us, but we're here for support, and anything we can do as a board, or, I'm speaking for all of us, but should be speaking for myself, but anyway, I think everybody feels the same, that anything we can do, there's a problem, please us, no, if there's anything we can do to be assistance, that's what we're here for. Uh, second thing, I just, like Commissioner Fleming said about the city, uh, just look forward to it. There's been many talks in the past about doing things. The problem is it just, it's always tall, never getting to the goal line. I mean, that's, that's, that's what it's about. It's about getting to the finish line with something, and looking back and say, we partnered on this, and we made it happen, and we've done it in record time, and that's, that's what we're looking for. So, just grateful to each other. Love to see, see you here on the front, right here on the front, got all the chairs full. That's, that's awesome. I really appreciate it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, sir. I, I just echo what Commissioner Stapleton just said, um, took some of the words out of my mouth, but, you know, Patrick Lawson, Lomack, and the rest of those staff members are going through, just appreciate them, and, and keep powering through. Hopefully you help, you don't hesitate to ask. And again, with the city, I touched on earlier, glad y'all are here. I'm looking forward to making some, uh, making some big things happen in the next few years, working with George and the council members.
Good job.
Mr. Hugh?
I agree with that. I mean, like a few of you guys have said, with new members coming, new ideas and new ways of doing things, and a lot of you guys I know, and I look forward to, you know, continuing to work with me, the ones I know, and creating those relationships as well. Um, obviously, keep with Patrick, his family in our prayers. Our employees, I tell you, and, and I tell them, these folks are pretty, our employees make us look good every day. I mean, sometimes they make us look bad, but for the most part, they make us look good. And I just want to say, I appreciate all the departments and all the hard work they do. And last but not least, I don't know if any of you guys knew Mr. Winston Williams, he had the bumper of a rocker store here in town for many of years. He passed away this afternoon. Yeah, it's a very unfortunate thing, and, um, my thoughts and prayers with him and his family, and, uh, I'm telling you guys, if we just lift him up, so.
I didn't know about Winston's story here. Glad, glad to have all you folks here, the city council and all, and, uh, all you fine folks that show up in these meetings, we appreciate having you, and, uh, together we succeed, divided we fail, and that's, that's the way it is, and, uh, it's, it's good to see you here. I appreciate it.
Mr. Barry.
Uh, Mr. Barry.
Good, Mr. Chairman. This one, I didn't know if y'all knew, also, Mr. Van Oden, he is a former county commissioner in Branford, where he also passed away since the last meeting in his book. So, if y'all keep them, if y'all keep this thing in, period in his book, it's great. He was one of the finest ones ever, ever.
Good to hear.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna say this also, I, uh, I discovered when I was up to the clerk's office, uh, my classmate, Angie, uh, Miller, murdered, and she was, my classmate was Angie, like, Miller, you know, the deer after she passed away.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Blake, for bringing Mr. Harris, but I forgot about that. He was a, he was a fine fella, and, uh, a lonely person, all my life, and, and the family, and, uh, good folks. Like I said, I appreciate everybody coming, and with that, I just need a motion to the chair.
I'll propose.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor? Aye.